Let's call the meeting door and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Uncle?
Here.
Barshew?
Here.
McComber?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
And Corn? Here. The President and the County Board.
I bring something up before the meeting starts.
After a public comment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
At this point, we will take public comment. You can carry to address the board. Please attend to the podium. Speaking to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Was Chuck's microphone working?
Mine is. Mine is.
Good afternoon again. Sean McManus, 503 Silver Cove Drive, Traverse City, and Chair of the Planning Commission. It's on.
No, I'm gonna turn it off.
Oh.
Turning them up? What's he doing?
You have to get shorter.
Yeah, well, they need to warm up. In about three minutes, it'll be loud, so that's where it usually works. You know, I read the agenda, read the resolution. My position hasn't changed at all from last week. I think that they still have not met the conditions, but I really, tonight, just want to talk about two points, and it's really process. You know, this is paramount. What you're looking at, in my opinion, is paramount to many of these ordinance. I see the word adopted in the resolution, and I'd like some clarification. This is where the building code is as adopted by the township. When was that adopted? Because I didn't, you know, I don't remember adopting that. I know in our zoning ordinance, it talks about things, but if the resolution, in a sense, adopts the definition, in my opinion, is a change to the zoning ordinance. And all changes usually go through the planning commission. So I'm curious why we're not going back to the planning commission. This resolution, in my opinion, will change the RDO. Any change to the RDO would be a minor amendment to the PUD, and would need to come back to the planning commission. So I know you're being asked to look at this resolution, but there's two points that I would like clarified or follow. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else through public comment? All right. Denise?
I just want to say that I don't like the fact of having less than 24 hours meeting notice. I mean, I got that thing at 5:07 yesterday afternoon, and I had other commitments to do, and I had to juggle in order to be here tonight. I think we should allow to have more than a 24-hour notice in a special meeting.
We will move on to business. Come before the board. Consideration for our resolution 24-21-T to define housing construction for the Beta TC8C Plan Unit Development. And the reason that I scheduled two special meetings in such short order is that I think it's the right thing to do. I appreciate concerns about the possibility of a project not being finished. It's, no matter what we do, that is possible. But I do think that when you have an agreement, contract with the development, you follow the contract. There are pretty simple language. It says, "Trevor City Housing Commission must commence housing construction before Beta may make a request for a certificate of occupancy." There are, in front of you, five different definitions for start of construction. From those who would be considered authority. The first one is the 2015 Michigan Building Code, which we adopted in 2018. Next one is construction law and legal definitions. Initiation of construction means the date the notice to proceed with work is issued for the project. Next one is from the National Association of Home Builders. A start is defined as excavation, groundbreaking for the footings or foundation of a residential structure. For multifamily units, all units are counted as started when the structure is started. The architect's version we went through last time, and it specifically refers to the notice to proceed. And then the last, but not least, is the engineering definition. And once again, they refer to the notice to proceed. So the latest authoritative definition I can find is the 2015 Michigan Building Code, which is what I heard the last time we met.
I have a question. Is this multifamily?
Yes.
Okay, because the one you get from here, it says, "For a multifamily structure, all units are counted as started when the structure is started."
Right.
So that's not, I mean, it's not groundbreaking. It has to be structured, started for a multifamily structure.
Groundbreak, can I respond to a question? So as a builder, groundbreaking is start of construction because they're getting ready to pour forms and rebar?
But this says, "Structure is started." That's different, not groundbreaking.
Then we get it. I'm not going to argue with you about it, but structure, everybody has their own definition of structure. To me, structure is the whole thing started and going up. It's a structure. But I think, I think with us referencing the codes and then also the building codes as adopted by Garfield Township, I think, to me, when I read that, that meant to me that our code office references the building codes, is what I took that as. Our building department, Carl and them, have building codes that they go after and use, and we use. And that's what I took that as, is the building codes as adopted by the township and as adopted by basically our building department, is how I took that part.
The other larger portion you saw last time, and that's the Smith &amp; Henze Affordable Group, instruction oversight, the notice to proceed, it was filed June 21st, has a construction oversight agreement that lists the owner, the partners, the funding organizations, the builders, the legal affairs officer of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority who has assigned a construction overseer at that point in time. So in their eyes, construction began that day. Also lists the lender and all of the responsible people. It is a completed document referring to funding, contracts. And, yeah, I don't, I don't think that stalling it for another week will change the odds of it getting built, one iota. It is only stalling it for a week.
Okay, a couple of things. First, I've not seen us do a resolution for one specific problem, and so I'm not real crazy about this idea. Last week, when we met about this, we talked about the building code. That's, most people kind of agreed, commencing construction was when you pour the forms or the slab, you got the footings, you've got pilings and other things, which is what's in here, that's here. So all of these other definitions are not what we go under. Garfield Township building code goes by the Michigan Building Code, and that's what's here, and that's what's here. So bringing up all that other stuff is just stuff. So let me just finish.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have that. We have a planning commission who has studied this thing for two years. The planning commission has set down the stipulations for this project. We've changed it from the beginning. In the beginning, it was, they're going to be living in those houses. Now, we've given that part up. Now, the next thing was, because the funding fell through, the next part was, well, we'll have them put in walls. And now we're moving to the next step here, is, well, we'll let them have footings. Some of us on the board would like to say, there's a tractor on the site, so they've started. I don't see it that way. I think that this resolution, are you just putting this out for us to clarify, or what are, did somebody ask for this resolution coming from this board? We've already talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
We talked about it, and we had different opinions. And there's a need for clarity on the part of the developers.
Okay. In the normal process of things, it's my understanding, we would go back through the planning commission, and we would go through what their process was, and it may be an amendment to it, but we follow the process. We don't just, it's like spot zoning. We don't just do it because somebody wants that done. So if you want to go back through the planning commission and say, do you guys all agree to that? I mean, this board has the power to do it, but I don't like that precedent, so...
So the normal process is initiated by the developer who wants to amend.
So they came directly to this board, rather than going back through the planning?
So they asked for this resolution? They asked for this resolution? Was it?
They asked for some certainty, and I felt a resolution was the best.
So you were doing this?
Correct. Steve?
When I left the last meeting, it got voted down. Three of us for it, four against it. And when I left and got in my truck, I thought, I should have asked the question, so what is it they need to have to get occupancy?
Correct.
And to me, I feel like this clarifies it, and there was mention of the building codes with the footings. The planning commission does a great job, but I think they missed clarifying what start of construction was. It'd be no different than saying, if you speed down veterans, you're going to get a ticket. And then two weeks later, or months later, they come back and they say, oh, by the way, the speed limit's 35. But it wasn't in the original write-up of what the speed limit was, you know what I mean? I feel like we're coming in the back door, trying to explain what it was, and I don't think it'll happen again, because it's a simple thing. You could say, start of construction means, according to Michigan Building Codes, paragraph, whatever, whatever, and then write it out. And I think it was a simple miss, but I do understand, in my opinion, why we're here tonight and why Chuck did this, because of how I felt leaving the last meeting. I was like, I should have asked that question, because they all probably left here going, what is start? Walls up, footings, plumbing? And I think this kind of clarifies it.
That's how I felt, too. I felt like, because we turned them down the last meeting, we probably should have responded in some way with what our expectations were, instead of just leaving it like that. So I think the resolution is kind of like, hopefully, and we can change this, but hopefully us all coming to an agreement on what it actually means. And I think, it seemed like everybody agreed that the building code was a good definition to use, so that's the definition in this resolution. And this also, I think, authorizes Carl to go out and make sure that they're meeting the definition, so that we don't have to wait for the next board meeting, or two weeks, or, you know. So that's also another reason why I like it, is because Carl can make sure it meets the building code definition, and then Carl can give them their certificate of occupancy. But I do feel like the ball is kind of in our court to reply back in some way to them and give them a little bit more clarity, because we did reject them. So I thought this is a good way to do it. As far as altering the RDO, I'm not sure. Can John answer that, with accepting this? Does it need to go back to the planning commission, or what's, what are your views on it?
That's a good question. I don't know if I have a real clear answer for you. I mean, it can be interpreted as potentially an amendment to the RDO, or it could just be interpreted as an interpretation of the condition that was placed on it.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, I don't know if it is an actual amendment to the RDO or no. It could be, or it could not.
Okay. Very clear. Those were my thoughts.
Mr. Barshew?
So there's so many different definitions. I think it just muddies it. I think you need to pick the one that we operate under in our building department, which the Michigan Code makes the most sense. And the definition that's here is listed in the resolution, in the agreement, and I agree, you know, that we sent them these letters to say, hey, you have to comply on this. I guess the first thing that I would have done is, okay, what does that mean? You know, I wish there would have been a conversation with them in the planning department, okay, what does this mean? And we wouldn't be here today. And maybe that occurred, I don't know. And I also, I always look at myself and what could I have done different, because I take responsibility for things. And sometimes, we're not as thorough as we need to be, and you don't think of everything. And when stuff like this comes up, it's like in law enforcement, it's case law. You know, things happen, you, you know, things go through court, and all of a sudden, here's some new case law, and that's how things are done in the future. So you can't think of everything, otherwise you wouldn't have litigation and new case law coming up. One thing that I do like is that, you know, this is a great project for our community, they're great partners, and this adds a standard. I think it's a standard that we would carry forward. So if we set a precedence today, when we amend our zoning and say, here are the standards we're going to follow, we're going to have our billing official go out there, you know, what we, if we were to approve this, it's basically going to just put it into cement in our zoning in the future. So I don't feel like we're taking a leap here in doing something that we shouldn't be doing. I do like the fact that, you know, Carl would be going out there and verifying that, and I feel like it's more than just clearing dirt off the site and having a bunch of heavy equipment there to give the appearance. So I think we need to work through this. I think that if we go back to the planning commission and that process, it's going to take time and hold things up. I'd like to see Beta into their facility, which is nice. I'd also like to see the company that's taken over their facility to plan and move forward. So a lot of things are hinging on this, and sometimes I think you have to make decisions that I think are in the best interest of everybody. And I kind of feel comfortable that, you know, the definition we have is objective. It's in the building code, and it's more than just moving dirt. So I feel more comfortable today than I did the other day, because of the way this is worded. But I do feel like if we do approve this, then there's going to be immediate work on changing our zoning, so that way, anybody in the future, when they come across this, we don't have to deal with this again. It's pretty cut and dry. So that's all I have to say.
Mrs. McManus?
Yeah, so usually, whenever you change something and set something forward like this for zoning, you would go to the zoning board to do this, and then the planning commission, there's a hearing to change what's in our zoning. I'm not sure I like the resolution coming the way it does either. I don't think we're following our processes that we normally would follow. If you change the RDO, it would go back to the planning commission, and I believe that we should follow our processes. Just...
Denise, again.
I have a question, just to clarify for me. So Beta could not take occupancy, if we pass this resolution, okay? Beta cannot take occupancy until there is footings?
Poured.
Poured.
Correct.
So that means they have to have pouring a slab or footings?
Right.
Is that done yet?
No.
Okay.
Carl's out there right now, looking at the frames, the forms.
So I did verify with one of the gentlemen, the footings are dug, they are formed, and the rebar did show. So once the rebar's set, Carl will inspect the footings. Once he inspects that and gives them approval, then they can cover those footings up with concrete, and they're considered poured.
So how long are we talking? Do you know?
Monday, maybe.
Oh.
If the rebar's in, they'll probably set those today or tomorrow. Inspections can't happen tomorrow, because the office is closed, but if they ordered the inspection before 6:00 today, for Monday, when Carl's out there and inspects the rebar, the cement truck can be sitting there and start driving around and pouring.
And maybe that's a solution to the problem. I don't like the resolution. I don't like changing zoning by resolutions. I don't, I don't like having resolutions to one individual. Maybe the board can decide what is construction. Clearly, in my mind, I sat through two years of talking about this project on the planning commission, and the conversation, everybody in the room knew the conversation was, we've got to have housing. Beta is not there without housing, and it was very firm. And it came down through, and then, as I said, it kind of trickles off a little bit. So I can't vote to make changes to things by resolution without some study by the planning commission, without some other thing. But if we want to bring up the issue of, are we following the Michigan Building Code, I might be able to head in that direction. If the board votes they want to follow the Michigan Building Code, and what it says is pouring of the slab or footings. So I might be able to head in that direction. Maybe that's some discussion we ought to have. But I don't like the process of trying to change things for one individual, because the next one's going to come and say, oh, I want flashing sign in my yard, and, you know, if it gets enough board members on board, well, then we'll just go ahead and do it. And I don't, I don't like doing things that way, so...
There's a huge difference between flashing signs and the definition of terms.
So we're just using as...
I understand.
Yeah.
But it is...
Trying to compromise.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
I think we're trying to just define what construct, start of construction is, and I think we've done a good job. But the only thing I would ask maybe Chuck is in the last whereas, we put the Michigan Building Code, just so we know which building code it is, because somebody could produce an Iowa one, because they're from Iowa.
Well, this is specifically for this project, and it is the building code as adopted by the township.
Which is the Michigan Building Code?
We've only adopted one.
Okay, I get it. All right.
I have to agree with Molly. If we're just doing a resolution for one, we're going to do it for everybody in the near future, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
I would think that at this point in time, in the future, if we have another development of similar nature, or a PUD, that we would define the term in the RDO.
I think, and we can ask John this question. Do we, in our zoning that we have, when we talk about construction, we talk about the definition that's in the Michigan Building Code, don't we? Don't we refer back to that?
Well, the zoning ordinance has an article that provides all the definitions within the zoning ordinance, but it also has a provision, because it doesn't define every single term. So it does allow for outside, other sources to be used. If the zoning ordinance does not provide that definition, that you can use other sources to provide that. We do have another, one part of the ordinance talks about, when a development is granted approval, it must start within two years, unless substantial construction has occurred. And we have kind of wrestled with that to determine, what is substantial construction?
Uh-oh, that's another one.
Right, but, so that's, it does, I think it would make sense for us to clarify this in the zoning ordinance itself. But yeah, the zoning ordinance recognizes it can't, it may not provide a definition for everything. So using the Michigan Building Code definition, since that was another ordinance or code adopted by the township, can make sense from that standpoint, so...
So would it, could you take it back to the planning commission and say, the board wants it to be pouring a slab and/or, and/or pouring footings, and have that suffice? I'm just having a big problem with doing things this way, and, you know...
Again, I think it's an isolated incident. It is specific to this project.
I understand that.
And anything that amounts to stalling it goes against my grain.
Goes against your...
It goes against my grain. I've always looked for efficiencies in building a $30 million facility, and then having them meet the definition, and then be told, well, no, this is not more than, this is more than a definition, this is changing the entire universe. It's ludicrous.
So it won't?
It's ludicrous.
It won't?
It'll stall, it will not improve the situation, and I will finish speaking.
No, I'm just getting out of the way.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, again, I believe it is a single, one-time definition in this resolution. The resolution states that it is for this project. It is not changing any of the documents. It is defining one term.
Okay.
It's a single decision, not a study.
Okay. Ready?
Do we even have to have, I'm just going to throw this out there. They have a building permit, and I'm betting on that building permit, it references the 2015 Michigan Codes.
Correct.
This is in the 2015 Michigan Codes, page 36. Do we even have to have a resolution? Can't we just say, we are basing start of construction on the building permit you've been issued that references the codes, and page 36 defines such as pouring of a slab or footing? Do we need a resolution?
That's my question.
Because they're already bound to the 2015 Michigan Codes with their permit.
I mean, if the refs of the board is comfortable with a simple roll call vote?
I mean, it does reference it. Every permit I've ever got usually states right on there what code you're going by, and it, and I'm sure their building permit, all the documents, something in the documentation's going to reference this. Then we're not setting up a resolution for a specific. We can just tell them... We can just tell them, per your permit, it references the 15 Code, page 36 defines what you need to have done, and it's the same thing as the resolution, but we don't do the resolution. I'm, I just throwing that out there. Maybe that'll help.
Again, I, it's the board's, it is, if it's the will of the board, we can do that. My only misgiving with that is that, if that motion is going to be made, that again, it gives Carl the authority to make a decision. He is a professional, this is what he does for a living, and I, that would prevent any further delays. Chris?
To Molly's point, I kind of felt the same way when I saw this. Does it have to be tied to this project? Can it be, you know, the charter township of Garfield zoning ordinance permits the application and approval of plan unit developments? That happens all the time, right? And I'm just throwing this out there. The township approves plan unit developments, period. A condition of approval for some plan unit developments may include that construction must commence, something like that, vague. And then the last one, where the building code is adopted, I mean, that would be the same. And then you could add under that, is that in the case that construction must commence, you know, however you want to word it, and then just say that the building official will approve progress and ensure that it complies with the code. I'm just, to Molly's point, that we're, you know, you're tying it to a project, she says that maybe we should let it be vague and just, you know, have it be simple and apply to everything. Just throwing it out there.
In a manner of speaking, then we would be, I mean, if we did a resolution to that effect, it would be changing our planning code. So, I mean, adding to it, or, that would be a public process. So if, as I said, if you want to do a simple roll call vote, referencing the existing building code and giving Carl the authority to make the determination and issue the CFO, I'd be comfortable with that.
I'll make the motion that, hold on, I got to get my glasses on. TCHC and Beta Plan Unit Development was issued the building permit that references the 2015 Michigan Codes. The definition of start of construction is on page 36 of those codes, which they should have issued to them already. Once our building department has determined that they have fulfilled this requirement, our building official may issue Beta full occupancy permit.
I can support that.
We have a motion by Dool and support by Barchef. Questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Dool?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Korn?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We will return to public comment.
Wait, we got John over here.
Wait, wait. Before we go, I just want to make a comment. In that condition, there's a sentence that follows after that, that says Beta must complete the transfer station and open space improvements in the transit phase at the same time, or bore for completion of the bus garage, bus maintenance garage, or bus storage garage, bus maintenance garage and administration building. So that, those, the transfer station and open space improvements have to be completed as well. So the, it appears that the transfer station is complete. That would be, usually the zoning administrator would go out and, you know, determine that the site improvements are completed. The open space improvements are not done, but they are offered to issue, provide a performance guarantee, which we would be typical of what we do for projects, particularly in this case, since it's trails that would probably be best be done in concert when the housing commission or the housing phase is at that point. So just wanted to point that out, as that, that's also kind of coincides with this.
All right, and I believe Beta has indicated a willingness to provide those guarantees?
Yes. They've indicated to that. So I, again, it's not, not much of a sizable part, but it is an important part that was stated in that condition. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that as well.
A question? Of what form is that guarantee going to be in? Often we ask for a surety of some kind. Are we, it's just going to be a, we're going to do it kind of thing?
Yeah.
And you're good with that?
Yeah, it's, the ordinance provides for all different form, you know, whether it's a bond, or cash, or anything like that, some type of an assurance that that will be completed, and it's to cover the costs should that not be completed per the plan. So the ordinance provides for them to do that. And I would consider it, from the standpoint, that it's a fairly, while it's still a central piece, is fairly minor in terms of scale and extent of what is involved in putting in some of those trails.
And that would go through, through the planning department here?
Yes, there's, there's an application, we essentially set up like an escrow account, which would hold that until it's, you know, and once it's completed, then they can request it, and it's released back to them.
Do you feel you have everything you need to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And that brings us back to public comment.
Again, Joe McManus. Thank you for not doing the resolution. I'm in 100% agreement with Molly. That was a Pandora's Box to me. If you would do, pass one resolution specific for one development, that lets the next person come down and say, well, you did it for Beta, you could be able to do it for us now. I don't like that wording in my development. I want to change mine. So I don't think a resolution was the way to handle this. If, simple vote, if that's what we've adopted in 2018, that's the definition, they threw unbiased, okay? And by resolution, I think you would have tied our hands in what one of our projects is going to be on the planning commission, is redefine construction in all aspects of it. So the next time, when we set expectations on what is going to be done, and what the developer agreed to do, it's going to be very clear. So thank you for that, because the resolution, I think, would have really tied our hands in the future, and quite frankly, set the township up for some problems going forward. So I think everybody's happy tonight, and we'll get it fixed going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Any other business to come before the board?
I just have a question. Is this something that the planning commission can now look into?
Yes.
That, you know, so we don't have this problem again?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, I just appreciate the comments, and we're able to come up with a solution, and, you know, everybody kind of wins here. We'll just get better next time, and, like I said, we won't have to have a special meeting last minute to, to resolve it, so, good work, everybody.
All right, everybody enjoy the rest of the month, wherever you are. We are, Jerry. Have a good night.